We don't want to salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm gonna do something different. This is, we have done at least 100 town halls at this point in a little over a year and a half, 100 live town halls. And so for some of you who saw, you know, stepped through one of these before, thank you for coming back. That tells me I didn't bore you too badly the last time. I'm gonna talk about a very similar subject, a thing that I just keep harping on, but I want to do it in a different way. I'm on the Budget Committee, and the reason why they put me on the Budget Committee is because when you, you know, run for office, people kind of get a perspective from afar out of DC, so you get a reputation already. So they kind of know what you're passionate about. Some people knew I was passionate about numbers, so I ended up on the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee is set up to set the top line number, and then the appropriators are supposed to follow what's called 302B, follow the top line. So we're supposed to set the top line spend, and then the appropriators are supposed to follow that. That's how it's designed. I'm gonna tell you it operates that way. The Budget Committee Chairman, the Budget Committee Chairman, Jody Arrington, from West Texas, he represents West Texas, which holds a place in my heart, because I used to send Gildings out to West Texas for feed yards out there. We start them and go out there and leave them for two years, and then they would get corn fat, like the steers that were being fed in those feed yards, and then we'd haul them to the Clovis Horse Cell. And these are some big old 1,300 pound Gildings, and sell them in Steve Friscips, and I forget Charlie's last name, their big Clovis Horse Cell. Well, Jody Arrington, Chairman of our committee, he hired the daughter of that guy who used to run that big horse cell out there. And so I hit it off with him immediately, and he was a big fan of Tom Coburn's, and knew my connection to Coburn. And Jody's passion, he's not in the Freedom Caucus with us, but he's very passionate about correcting our fiscal problems. So Jody has been, we've been talking about a number of things for the last year and a half. Jody had staff put together this presentation. I said, and I got giddy with Jody, and I said, "Jody, I'd say this to the, I don't know if I told him this, but I told Speaker McCarthy, this is a way to change our conference, for a conference that won't address the real root problem, that we stay on the shiny objects in Washington DC." Everybody, as Thomas Massey says, that, that, that politics is for, is the Hollywood for ugly people, because they couldn't make it, you know, in Hollywood, they weren't pretty enough, and so they want to be on TV. And that's why we chase the shiny objects, always the theater, and never the, the nitty gritty of what Congress is supposed to be there for, as James Madison described it, "The power of the purse." That's the real job of people that are supposed to go to Washington DC, is to really scour and make sure the resources that are taken from you are used efficiently and effectively, and they're producing the results that are intended, and that they're being used lawfully. Okay. So Jody and I giddy about the concept that we're piloting in the 2nd Congressional District. So I've taken a presentation on the show, so I can come back, when we get back up there, and I can say, "Add water. All you gotta do is add water to this presentation. Go give this presentation," a member from California who's scared to death to talk about spending restraint. "Go give this presentation." And the hope is, is if you'll do this as many times as, you know, we've been in touch with our constituents, you don't have to fear that by telling people the truth, that they're gonna toss you out. That's why people, nobody wants to make the hard choices, they fear that they, they can't stay in office, and so they just continue the status quo. And my encouragement is, go speak truthfully to the people, and give them a chance to surprise you. And if you'll be frank and upfront with them and tell them, "This is why we've got to go this direction," then, then you don't have to constantly be giving out more free candy with no accountability. All right? I told this story earlier, the first time I've told this story, a couple of years ago, my daughter borrowed my truck with a friend of hers, and three-quarter ton, and, you know, it got a gooseneck ball in the middle of it, and it's a sizable truck, and so it weighs something. One of the, a couple of lug nuts got loose on, on, studded broke off on the side of one of the wheels, and I didn't know it. And so they called me, and they broke down, and, but they couldn't figure out what's going on. They heard a noise, finally decided to pull over. So that's a friend of mine, who's, who was the ex-sun-law of an old ag teacher friend of mine, he goes out there and gets some and takes care of it, so I can get to him. Come to find out, my daughter was just about to get her driver's license, thank goodness she wasn't driving, because what was happening was, they were hearing this noise, "Kaklunk, kaklunk, kaklunk," there's the wheel trying to come off, right? Studded broke loose, only, only one or two lug nuts opened and gone. And, and he says to her, "Okay, we need to pull over, something's wrong." She didn't want to pull over. She finally says to him, "Don't worry about it, just turn the radio up." That's a true story. That girl was about to get her driver's license. Now, I'm happy to report, we've made some course corrections since then, and she, you know, was forced to check her motor oil, and she's got a good paying job at a little bit of a clinic she's been working at, and.
She didn't work in Washington, didn't she?
Good. So either we turn the radio up, and we get the four-way out, and we examine the problem. So here we go, okay? Sound of the alarm, here we go. Y'all know this, but the problem is, since this was produced a few weeks ago, it's $35 trillion now.
Yeah.
Right? And so this number's even higher. $104,000 is per, per person the debt. If you want to follow along, if you're having trouble seeing this, the number, number one, I'll try to say the numbers as I go through this slide. We're just gonna kind of root clue this, because I think you'll see, well, it's a lot of questions you'll wonder about, how do we get to the solution, if you can kind of go through this with me. All right. Annually, right now, we're running $2 trillion deficits. That's our annual overspend. Every year, we're overspending by $2 trillion. That, in the red, spending $76,000 per second, in the red. But that, but if the total spend, not just in the red spend, the total spend is north of $190,000. Y'all, the speed of light is 186,000 miles per second. So if you remove miles, replace it with dollar signs, at $190,000 sub-total per second, we're spending faster than the speed of light. This is the, the last 60-year look back, 40-year look back, rather, to 1980. 1980's where we tripped $1 trillion in gross national debt. Debt is accumulative deficits. Deficits is what happens in a year total. Deficits happen every year, or overspend every year, debt is the accumulation. So deficit spending reached $1 trillion, the grand total, by 1980's $1 trillion. Look at this. This is, this is the launching pad we're on. If we change nothing, if nothing, no catastrophic events, no more COVIDs, no bank bailouts, no new wars, current spending levels, adjusted for inflation, this is the CBO projection of where we're headed. Right now, it's $35 trillion. Y'all, that 1980, when we tripped $1 trillion for the first time in our country's history, we'll overspend twice at a time in one year, $2 trillion deficit. We'll overspend by $2 trillion this year, add another $2 trillion, starting in 10 years, instead of adding $2 trillion more every year, we'll add $3 trillion more, starting in 10 years. And then you can see where we're headed. This is the annual deficits, again, what happens annually, every year. What you'll see is, for years, we were running billion-dollar deficits in the, in the 80's, then all of a sudden, you have this little dip down here, this is page four. What happened there? You had a little Contract with America group, some of you that I first met years ago when I was working for Tom Coburn, Coburn, Steve Largit, America demanded some accountability with the Contract with America class of 94. They ushered in this new way of thinking. By the time those elected officials had matured, that ideology was vacillating, then you get John Kasich as Budget Committee Chairman. Remember, this is a Budget Committee. John Kasich produces a budget. He's the work. Is anybody by reputation, can you tell me on this political spectrum, is Kasich a conservative or a moderate?
Moderate.
He's a moderate. But look at how far the ideological ship, forget Democrat and Republican. Kasich produces a budget, who signs it? Clinton. Is that Republican and Democrat assigned? I'm gonna talk to you the difference between progressive and conservative ideology. He's a moderate. What have we done to ourselves? Our ideology spectrum in both parties is shifting further to the point where we don't understand this anymore. I made this point in a hearing a couple of months ago, where this current administration is adding $500 billion in their projection for new taxes. And I cited to their, to their OMB Director, I think he's their OMB Director, and I said, "I want to remind you of what Bill Clinton was saying in the 90's, where he was trying to raise revenue to, to address the deficits." They, in this administration, Republicans are just as guilty many times, were trying to add a $500 billion tax scheme, but it was designed for new programs. What am I saying? There's an ideological shift, a shifting danger, where both Democrats and Republicans have totally removed themselves from what was once mainstay thinking. You keep your focus on the prize of balanced budgets. All right, and that's why we're doing this, okay? Now look at this, $2.9 trillion is gonna be our deficit in 10 years. Not $2 trillion, $3 trillion. It'll be $7 trillion. Annually, we will overspend at the current rate by $7 trillion in 30 years from now. But I'm gonna show you, we're not gonna make it that far financially. All right, we're at 124% debt to GDP ratio. Our gross domestic product, all goods sold, all services provided, all labor, has a dollar figure associated with it on an annual basis, so I think we're about $27 trillion. Somebody feel free to fact-check me on that. I think that's right. I told staff that a number of times to fact-check me, and nobody's gotten me that response yet, but I think that's right. At least town halls in the last week. So, but when I'm showing you this chart, going back to 1940's, we've been in this situation one other time in our nation's history. In the 1940's, we had 119% debt to GDP ratio. But look at what the difference of, of, of thinking back then. It's George Washington thinking. He has a great statement. "You discharge the wartime debt in times of peace." You discharge your wartime debt in times of peace. Came off a war, the same greatest generation fought the war, but what'd they do? They paid off their debts. They made hard choices. And by the 1970's, we had a 25 debt to GDP ratio. What are we doing? The ideological shift of both parties, where are we at now, and where are we headed? Nobody wants to pay as we go anymore. 124% debt to GDP ratio, 200%, y'all, there's only 10 other countries, that's in 30 years, we've been 131 by 2034, only 10 other countries that have a higher debt to GDP ratio right now than the United States. The world reserve currency is ours because we've been perceived as having the strongest economy. It happened after World War II, we were perceived as having the strongest economy, in tandem with all of this happening, okay? That's why we have the world reserve currency. With all you're hearing about BRICS and these other countries that are trying to compete with the world reserve currency, and the loss of the dollar being what is used to buy crude, what's happening is, people are no longer that concerned about our place in, in the world reserve currency world anymore. Our perception as being the strongest economy, we don't have that perception, that's the danger. When there's only, when you're among the top 10 countries, numbered, not percentage, top 10 countries in the, maybe 11 or 12, but let me say top 10, I'm close, of all 200 nations that have this kind of debt loading, people say, "Oh, we've got the world reserve currency, you don't have to worry about this." You have to worry about it. And the only reason we have it is because of perception. What, what's happened to us in the last 10 years? Two different groups have downgraded us from AAA rating. All right. This is control, controlled by Congress. The 302A number, the Budget Committee sets the top line number for, the committee I'm a part of, that used to be 66% prior to 1965, where we had control over how much spent. Back then, the appropriators actually followed the Budget Committee. 34% was what was mandatory. 34% was mandatory. What was the mandatory component? What is the word, what, what is indicative of the word mandatory? It's required, it's gonna happen. Mandatory spend means that Congress is, is not individually voting every year, this is what will happen, this shall happen. It's on autopilot. What that was indicative of was Social Security, where they set up the payroll tax as the revenue source, and they put trustees in place who managed it, and they were gonna pay out, not by Congress voting, but based upon the revenue and the way the program's set up. And trustees who managed automatic payout based upon revenue coming in. When it was started in 1935, the tax rate was 3%. Not one, one and a half to the employee, one and a half to the employer, what is it today? 15%, 7.65% to the employee, 7.65% to employer. Started out at one and a half percent each, now it's at 7.65% each. Back then, you had 150 people working and one person retired in 1935. Today, it's one person retired, three people working, okay? So it was only Social Security, supported by the payroll tax, 34% of the budget was Social Security back then, mandated. Congress had control of 66%. Look where we're at today. Congress has lost control over the total spend for this country. We only, in the Budget Committee, the 12 appropriation bills that makes all the news all year long, we're only relegated almost to just one-fourth of all spending now, because they put everything else on autopilot. Well, Josh, what else has been added? Great Society added Medicare to the payroll tax. Supposed to. The payroll tax started at that, that one and a half to employee, one and a half to employer, by the time you get into 50's, it's about 3%, I'm sorry, about 5%. They add something else to support Social Security, I guess. By the time we get to the Great Society, they jump it to 9%. Why'd they jump it to 9% total tax? To support Medicare. They bring Medicare into the system. All right? Well, now, Medicare's now brought in to be supposedly, you'll see in a minute, it's not, supposedly, the payroll tax is supposed to be enough to support both Social Security and Medicare. So Medicare's now mandatory, paying more taxes before you get more revenue. But what else do they add to mandatory spending on autopilot that Congress doesn't vote on every year? Medicaid, veteran benefits, which, I want you to hear me say this clearly, that is constitutional. Veteran benefits is constitutional, okay? Now, I will never talk about any government program and not tell you, I'm not all in favor of scrutinizing every government program for efficiency, okay? But there is a, there is, I make a big distinction between things that you can look at, and so constitutionally, something has the authority, because that's the way our founders set it up, and that's important to note. Veteran benefits is mandatory. Food stamps, they put food stamps into the mandatory category. Supplemental security income, don't confuse that with anything Social Security related. Supplemental security income, that is cash payments, it's a social safety net, okay? What is discretionary? All defense spending. Troop salaries. So food stamps and Medicaid for the indigent is mandated, but troop salaries is an afterthought. And what you need to know even more so than that, last year for the first time in our nation's history, not only was this the size of our mandatory budget, but that mandatory budget consumed all revenue. So look at this again with fresh eyes, all that black, not only does that, that, that tell you how much was mandatory, that's all the revenue we had. We only had enough dollar figure, dollar, pound for pound, revenue to support only Medicaid, mandated spending. That means every bit of what you heard debated last year in terms of dollar-figure number of the $2 trillion deficit we had last year, that's where it came from. By the time the mandated, first in line, the cow who's had a number of calves, she's gonna get hers at the trough, first calf ever, she's kind of lost once she gets in the pen, right? This is first calf ever. This is the cows that two or three calves, she's gonna stay plump in the wintertime. Troop salaries, and all tank building, and all ship building was borrowed money last year. Let's say it again. Mandatory got all the revenue, there was no money left over for everything else that almost every one of you in here thinks about when you think about federal government spending. The 12 appropriation bills, everything we debated last year, all year long, was borrowed funds. There wasn't a time I went to the floor to put an amendment that maybe somebody disagreed with, "Josh, why are you wanting to cut that program?" Most of my cuts were saying, "Can we not go back to 2019 on this particular program?" That I wasn't standing there in the back of my mind going, "Good gosh, don't you get it?" Many times was, I was saying it. 100% of this program is borrowed money, can we at least not just go back to 2019 spending levels? Don't you get it? Only enough revenue for this. Only enough revenue for Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, food stamps, veteran benefits, interest on the debt, forgot that one, interest on the debt, supplemental security income. And there's more, but those are the bulk. There was no money for education last year. There was no money for EPA, your favorite agency. There's no money for Department of Ag, anything. There was no money. No money for any troop salaries. Why are we getting, this is also something you need to know. Why isn't we getting a government shutdown, and food stamps continue to go out the door, but troops have to worry about whether or not they're gonna get paid? Because food stamps is mandated, troop salaries is an afterthought. Congress acts to act to make sure troops are paid. Okay, breaks it down even further. Here's mandatory, here's discretionary, page seven. Bottom two, discretionary. The way we break up discretionary now, what the Budget Committee sets, we have the defense side and the non-defense side. So of the discretionary, one half of it is defense spending. Of that 26% on that pie chart, one half of it is defense spending. The other half is all the other agencies. But what you need to know is, is a percent of our GDP, we spend less now on defense than any other time relative to, I'm sorry, relative to World War II era, and now coming off of World War II, and really history. As a percentage of our budget, we are less in size for our military spending than any other time. Why? Because everything else is eating up the percentages. You say, "Well, Josh, should that really matter?" Yeah, it should, because some of you have heard me do this. Article I, Section 8 of the US Constitution lists 18 things our founders set up when they put this body politic together. The United States coming together, what was the purpose? Why did we move from the Articles of Confederation to put the Constitution together? Because we had war debts, we couldn't get the states voluntary to pay off, and they said, "We've got to inform ourselves in a coalition to be able to address the tyranny of one. We can't get our troops reimbursed for what they fought in the American Revolutionary War. We've got to have defense." So that's why, in Article I, Section 8, they list 18 things, I'll run them through quickly, because you need to hear them, that Congress is empowered to do. Tax, regulate commerce, coin money, counterfeit enforcement, borrow, yeah, they can do it, bankruptcy, naturalization, uniformity, did counterfeit enforcement? I did. Patents, post office, post office roads, piracy on the open waters, DC oversight, 10-square-mile area, original jurisdiction, inferior court establishment under the United States Supreme Court, Army, Navy, militia, regulatory authority over armed services, and the necessary and proper clause, which was what is necessary and proper to implement the specified terms I just mentioned. Okay? And then the 10th Amendment, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people." What did that mean? If it's not listed in the specified terms, who's supposed to be the governance body over it?
States.
The states or the people, okay? Called the rule of law. What does the rule of law mean? Nobody's above the Constitution. That's the framework. States, you are to be laboratories of experimentation according to Federalist 45. You scared me. Federalist 45 says, "The powers of the states are to be numerous and indefinite, the power to the Fed is to be few and defined." James Madison. What's he saying? Specified terms, I just quoted to you, the 18 enumerated powers, everything else left to the states. Would our founders ever, well, I just quoted you, if I gave this presentation to a founding father, and I said, "Troop salaries is borrowed money, but food stamps is first in line," what do you think they'd say to us?
It's a general.
He would, he would say, "Show me the Constitution where you gave you the authority to do that prioritization." Forty-seven seconds. Okay. All right, look at this. This is important. This is revenue, spend. Revenue, spend. The deficit, we didn't have enough, right? $2 trillion deficit last year. Payroll taxes, what we describe payroll taxes for, what are they for? Social Security, then Medicare was added to that. How much did we bring in last year in payroll taxes? 1.7 trillion. What did we spend on Social Security alone last year? 1.5. How much, were we able to fully meet Social Security's needs last year? Yes, barely. That .2 represents $200 billion. What else, since the Great Society is supposed to have been supported by payroll tax?
Medicaid.
Medicare. Medicaid is for the blind, aged, disabled, pregnant, nursing mothers. Medicare for 65 and older. Medicare cost $860 billion last year. Did payroll tax, was it able to meet the obligation? No. How much of a deficit? 200 billion left over? By the time you retire, what was owed to Social Security, the first one in line? 200 billion left up on Medicare, we ran a $660 billion deficit for Medicare last year. That's why Coburn 10 and 15 years ago was saying Medicare is functionally bankrupt. When Medicare Part D came in, and I met some of you for the very first time 20 years ago, when Coburn was on the campaign trail, running for the United States Senate, and saying, "We cannot afford Medicare Part D," even though George W. Bush wants to get elected, okay, by, by, by using it. And I'm not trying to be mean-spirited, every, so many politicians do it this way. They promise a benefit, okay? It was helpful to him in running for president. But Coburn had the backbone and the, and the courage to stand up and say, "We can't afford this." Look at this problem, folks. So that $600 billion every year comes out of the general fund. Now, that's not all Medicare Part D, it's so many elements of Medicare, over the years that things have been added. You can make a statement and say, when people say, "Well, I paid in to Social Security to be able to receive the benefits," okay. But you can't truthfully say, for the amount of benefits that are paying, that you're receiving through Medicare, that you paid in for that amount. I want everybody to hear that. Now, that's where I said earlier, Gary, is where I get a chance to back up what I said, this is where I played this in the last town hall, okay? This is where emotion is about to get really high in this room, okay? If I look at you, when I'm trying to give you some truth, and you get emotional here in a minute, and I look at you like I made the mistake of looking at my wife and saying, "Babe, let's just take emotion out of it, it's not gonna work out real well for me." Any other husband have that experience?
No.
So I'm not gonna say that to you, but I'm gonna plead with you. Understand what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to give you facts, so we can base the hard choices that are ahead. Can anybody say, "For Social Security, because you get a 1% return on investment," that's correct. You've paid in, that's a true statement on Social Security. Now, the problem is, you got too many people on SSDI, Supplemental, Social Security Disability Insurance, that don't, because there's old age survivors insurance, something else, Social Security Disability Insurance, Social Security Disability Insurance. You have to have work history to get OASI. You don't to get Social Security Disability Insurance. And we have fraudulent people who are getting mental health diagnosis, who are draining part of Social Security. Children that get an ADHD, attention deficit disorder, as pronounced by a doctor, that is robbing the ability for Social Security to be, to stay solid. But you can say, "Social Security, that you paid in enough." You can't make the claim, given the liabilities and amount of payout, that Medicare has received the contribution from the payroll tax to self-support. Can't make that claim on Medicare. Does that make sense? There's more benefit than was ever paid in to support Medicare right now. It's a hard thing, it's hard to feel. It feels yucky for me to have to give you that truth, right? But when you hear people making statements, you need to be armed with the facts, so we can, you can't, you can't correct quill coming off if you don't know where the problem is. Okay, can't turn the radio up, folks. All right, payroll tax, adjusted that. Josh, what about the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act? It's up for discussion in the next year or two, about reauthorizing that. 2017, there was the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. What has happened, and are you, what about the revenue side? Okay, let's talk about that. Coming back to this one in just a minute. That's 17%. If you look from 1960 until today, we have been running an average of revenue relative to our GDP of 17%. 17% taxation relative to our gross domestic product. That's the average. Why does that matter? We were a country started by taxation without representation. We're pretty particular about how much taxes we pay in this country. And when there's this tax burden too high, we demand less. When it's too low, you'll see an ebb and flow here. 17%. Where are we at now? We're at 16%. All right, Josh, if you're 1% of a 60-year history below revenue, what about that 1% adjustment? Okay, do the math on it. The problem is not the 1% in full, okay? The problem is not the 1%. The problem is the chasm between 16% and our spend at 23%. Do you see this? Even if you adjust the 1% to the 60-year norm, but here's what I'm gonna show you, though. We're actually bringing in more revenue than we were prior to the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. You go, "Well, you mean we were bringing in less than the 16% relative?" Watch this, you help me do the math here, okay? It looks like we're on back to. Okay. I just got off the phone last week, Chip Roy, myself, a few others, joined Phil, okay, Chip's on the Budget Committee with us, Jody Arrington, Jody wasn't on this call, but talking about the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. And I want you to hear this from me. I want spending cuts. That reauthorization of that tax cut goes in, I want spending cuts. And many of my colleagues want spending cuts. Okay? This corporate income tax, the Biden-appointed, maintained position, OMB Director Phil, forgetting his last name, he's the director. He's not, he's not, he's not the Republicans' pick, okay? Phil's on the phone with us. In 2017, pre-Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we're bringing in 3.5 trillion in revenue. Post-Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, two and three years later, we're bringing in 4.5 trillion in revenue. Do those numbers again. Pre-Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we're bringing in 3.5 trillion in revenue. Two and three years after, we're bringing 4.5 trillion in revenue. Y'all, that is a massive increase. 200 years, you get to 3.5. And what jumps at a trillion dollars? Well, he told us on the phone, this is the guy who works under the Biden administration, the biggest change they would look at and say that was legit, was the corporate income tax change. Where we went from 36% corporate income tax rates to now 21%. We had the highest corporate tax rates of any country in the world, we're now in the average. And by being in the average, it's encouraged more people to want to invest and be in domicile in the United States. And what it's done is it's actually improved our financial condition. Well, Josh, if we have a trillion, almost a trillion more in revenue, what happened to our deficit getting larger in that timeframe? Because it did pick up a few clicks. All right, 2017, 3.5 trillion in revenue, we're spending 4.9. Now, 4.5 in revenue, what would have happened if we'd just maintained the 4.9 spend? By the way, take it through. Now, 4.5 in revenue, almost a trillion more revenue, but instead of spending 4.9 as a few, was our top line spend a few years ago, we're spending 6.2 now. It's what Reagan said. The reason why we have deficits is not because we tax too little, the reason we have deficits is because we spend too much. All right, Josh, well, all right, you've made a case for the corporate income tax rate change. Even some Democrats, those working under a Democrat president are saying that was a good change. What about income taxes? What about the seven graduated tax brackets? What about, because it's the largest of all the pie, while we get our revenue, it's the largest of where we derive revenue. What about the unfairness in the income tax code? Let's talk about it. I want you to pull up your phone, and I want you to go to the Tax Foundation. I want you to fact-check what I'm about to tell you. It's the most, most specific and broad studies out there that I know of come from the Tax Foundation. They study state by state, federal. The top 1% right now, last year paid 42% of all income taxes in this country. The top 1% of all earners in this nation paid 42% of income taxes, the largest driver of our revenue. All right? Okay, that's the top 1%. What about the top 50% of all income earners? The top 50% of all income earners last year, fact-check me in this moment, paid 97% of all income taxes in this country. Okay, what about the bottom 50%? The bottom 50% paid 2.3% of all income taxes. And then we have something called the Earned Income Tax Credit. The Earned Income Tax Credit is where you don't have to have any taxable liability at all. And the government, in addition to all those other mandatory programs I told you about, the way our tax structure is set up, will send you as much as $12,000 back in the mail at the end of tax time, when you paid not a dime in income taxes. It's called the refundable tax credit, it's called the earned, I helped them sell it when they sold that bill, the earned. They have it on the state number two. Earned income tax credit. You cannot help the poor man by destroying the rich man. You cannot strengthen the weak by weakening the strong. You can't lift the wage earner up by pulling the wage payer down. You cannot build character and courage by taking away people's initiative and independence. You cannot help people permanently by doing for them what you could and should be doing for themselves. They could and should be doing for themselves. And you cannot encourage the furtherance of brotherhood above, among mankind by inciting class hatred by the way that we are doing this gospel of envy, graduated tax rates in this country. Okay, y'all, I've led you to a conclusion. That's why Jody Arrington, myself, think it's important every member of Congress go out and give this presentation. And then you have the courage to execute on it. Y'all, what other conclusion can we reach at this point than to say, "We have to start trimming"? I have, we have to get serious about SSDI fraud, Medicare fraud, Medicare billing. Lots of entities make way too much off Medicare, totally agree. Too many people are receiving excessive benefits, okay? When you see waste among Medicare and you're getting the masks in the mail, it's all contributors. So both Democrats and Republicans are going to get real mad about their little, their little, their little groups that come to them and want more, more for less. If we're going to solve this problem, everybody has to have hands on deck. Everybody's going to have to hold, have to hold the four-way in their hand. Somebody's going to get on the jack, somebody's going to have to, you know, be the, be the person that says, "I get it. We've got to all participate." So, all right, what do y'all want to talk about now? Yes, sir.
Who's paying for the illegal aliens?
So I have a Congressional Research Service ask to them as of the last two weeks. For many months, letting y'all know that you always hear me talk about budget, or you always hear me talk about, if you follow our social media feeds, border, it's because those are my two committee assignments. They put me on Homeland Security, and they put me on budget. Therefore, this really matters to me, is I'm finding out all the different elements that, once you have a child, that you can get the Earned Income Tax Credit. Once you're an illegal and you have a child, then if you choose to be, turn your taxes in and not just do all cash payment, then you can get that refundable tax credit. But it's based upon having an anchor baby, having a child born here, what's your idea here?
I thought that was illegal, though. That is not a constitutional benefit. They cannot have a baby here and be an anchor baby.
They have done it, and they've used Supreme Court precedent, and they have used, it needs to be reversed. I totally agree with you, I'm all in favor, I've signed on to a measure to reverse it. Totally agree with you, okay? All right. So, but let me tell you, so, but we used to think that you only had to have a child. But I'm on the phone two weeks ago, we've been kind of talking it through with Congress. It was only child-dependent, once they got, the child was born, had a US citizenship, then they could get eligible for Medicaid and other benefits, okay? Food stamps, because it was child-specific in the household. Now, I'm on a call two weeks ago with CBO, about the time I learned some of this other stuff from Congressional Budget Office, Biden appointee, they informed, because I'd asked specifically. I want you to start giving us, because they're kind of painting a rose to your picture of all the numbers, because our reproductive population in the country since 1990 has not increased, okay? Joseph Silk in the room? That's where I pick on my colleague, Joseph Silk. Warren knows Joseph, we all served in the State Senate. I tell people, our population is on the decline since 1990, because everybody's not following the Joseph Silk model where he's got 10 kids. Okay? Joseph works with us, he handles all McGurk related issues, he's specific to McGurk. God bless Joseph and Kim, who, um, um. Warren's like, "I lost my train of thought by doing a stupid joke." So I've got CRS, we learned last week on the phone, that now CBO is telling us that they have figured out some way, somehow, through the gamesmanship of what's been going on, you can be here illegally for five years, and they're putting people on Medicare and Social Security.
What?
So I asked for a CRS, Congressional Research Report. So I told Chip Roy, who's one of the most brilliant people I ever worked with, on a phone call, I made sure to point out to Chip and some others, remember Chip specifically, wanted to say this to Chip, "We have a wrong understanding even in Washington DC. Common thinking up there, we don't even know fully what they're getting." I just learned a few months ago, in the state of Illinois, that you can, here in the illegal alien, you're getting a real ID compliant driver's license. Does anybody remember the whole premise? They've been pushing real ID by 2025, you're supposed to have it to go into federal buildings and fly, to make it safe, right? Because the 19 hijackers got, found a way to get a driver's license fraudulently. Now, we're supposed to solve that. In the state of Illinois, by the way, my orcas and this administration have designed parole. The state of Illinois has made it now, we're on the checklist of legal work permit, they count parole as legal work status, and illegal aliens in the state of Illinois are getting real ID compliant driver's licenses. So we're going to have a report that we're going to utilize. I filed several bills, in fact, the one bill that I did with JD Vance was to pull illegals off of the doctor recipients, off of the eligibility for the Affordable Care Act. And so we're going to, when I get this report back, we're going to use it to run legislation after legislation. One of the other bills I've done publicly, we worked with Heritage Foundation. My staff told me yesterday that Heritage is seemingly excited about this, is to find a way, not only to do deportation, but to have a pathway to pay for deportation. I am thoroughly convinced, if we don't deport this danger threshold that we're all under. Anybody having a conversation with your 18-year-old daughter like I am, and her mom and I are, about even in Oklahoma not being safe? Anybody see the social media post that was making its rounds out of Idabel a couple of weeks ago? You didn't see this? They got this guy, he's from Guatemala, or I think it was Guatemala. He's hanging around, the mom's got the baby in the backyard. The police pick him up, he's from Guatemala. Hanging around. And you think how terrifying that is? And I just want to deport him. So we reached out to the governor's office, trying to see what the governor's office may have interest in doing, because we've got the federal government who won't do anything about this kind of stuff. And, I mean, it's madness. Moms and dads in Idabel, Oklahoma, going to be worried about the guy who's sleeping back in the backyard? Maybe staking out the kid? I'm not saying that's what he was doing, but it was weird.
What did the governor's office say?
I'm going to keep that private, okay? But I pitched an idea to them, okay, we've got to work that idea through. But they're not, look, they get it, like we do. But I, there's certain things I can't, you know, go into full detail, because then I'm overpromising. In this situation, if I overpromise and there's no execution on the idea, then I sold you something that I don't have any control over the execution over. So let's just say we're working on some, we're conversing over some ideas. Yes?
You're talking about SSDI fraud. Now, I lived down in Douglas, Arizona for a year, and it's right on the border, there's a Walmart that's even closer, it's right on the border. And after the first of the month, you'd see all these Mexicans come over, come out of the Walmart, carrying, pulling two or three carts. And I asked this guy, "What is the deal with that?" He goes, "Oh, they're getting US debit cards, and they come over here and buy all they can." You can see them come out with Coke and chips, and he said, "They should use those debit cards, go back across the border, and sell that stuff to the stores over there."
Same thing happens in Walmart parking lots with US citizens with food stamp allocation. Y'all know that happens, right? Get your basket of goodies, go out in the parking lot, sell it for pennies on the dollar, go buy your drugs. You've got a real problem in this country. Y'all, what happened to the WPA and CCC getting started on the premise under Democrats? What was the premise? Come on, what was the major thing that helped you? You worked. I want to talk about this ideological shift where I can't get Republicans to agree to put work requirements on SNAP and Medicaid. In 1935, we were a stronger society. We'd gone through a strong struggle, but we were a stronger society. I often, look, my little girl, I'm picking on her, I love her, okay? I love her. But she wiggled and wiggled and writhed and it's, Mom and I, you're going to pay your way through school. She wants to maybe be a vet, maybe not, you're going to pay your way through school. I did it, you will do it. I want to develop the caterpillar into the butterfly. I'm not going to go in there and rescue her when she's half-deformed in my false mercy. Some of you parents say, "Oh, you're mean, you're mean, you're mean." I love her. I love her. It's out of my love for her that I know the character she's going to develop. "Well, none of my friends have to do that." You're just special.
That is, you're a special child.
There you go. Good for you.
What happened to the ideology that we all as a culture once believed in? That you work and you struggle, and it builds strength and character in you?
Brainwash through the education system.
Well, look, whatever the government tries to make affordable, it makes it too expensive.
Exactly.
This whole ideology, you can't, look, and you're struggling going, now, I'm not talking about when she goes on a vet school, you know, that's a different deal, taking out student loans or whatever. But I can show her, I have, it was, we had to have conversations. It was about your revenue, it was about your spend. And when I pointed to her the number of times, if she was going to her boyfriend's house that's 35, 40 miles away, and how much, we had to calculate your miles per gallon, and how much mileage you get for, for, you know, and how much that was costing you every month, it was like, I love her, okay, I love her. Okay? I love her, she's the sweetest thing. But we had a conversation about the spend and the revenue side. You've got to go ask for a raise, this vet fund you've been working at for a couple of years, or you need to go find another job. She got a raise. Yeah, somebody, Tracy, you can say something.
I was just wondering what you think about, I mean, how this has all developed over so many years, the people who have put it in place, and how campaign funding reform might help the fact that the billion-dollar companies are paying the congressmen and senators to vote for what makes them money, which is them selling Medicare drugs at an inflated rate.
But it's both, it's everywhere. Let me give you, let me give you, let me give you a practical example. I was state FFA president in Oklahoma in 1990, whatever. So I stay up to speed with all these young adults who become state FFA officers, and sometimes I get to go speak at cult conferences or whatever. And so there's this young lady named Leila Haji Downs now. She gets elected to state office from Guthrie, she has a real different SAE project, and she goes and becomes a national FFA officer, she's a big deal. So she's got contacts all over the world in ag commodity groups, okay? Okay? So I get an office, she becomes our political fundraiser. And I start having a conversation about, we're not going to dole out all these subsidies, and I'm an ag guy. Like, I know the stuff, you know, so corn growers and, you know, ethanol, and she's like, "How are we ever going to raise any money?" That's the problem. But it's both sides, right? It's the government contractors, Democrats and Republicans are filthy dirty over they turn their offices into these lobbyist hangouts, where they come in and they're their buddies, let me tell you the stories, though. Warren, you and I both know this. The moment their service ends, those lobbyists are never going to turn their calls back. But they sucker punched, because of their lack of self-esteem, thinking that these people really love them, and they, and they think they're their buddies for life, and they're coming in, and they're winding them and dining them and expecting, they max out campaign contributions. The greatest article, John, that we've had written on us was the Oklahman last year saying, "He doesn't raise enough money. How will he ever get reelected?" And I said, "If God wants me back, I'll get put back." You know why we don't raise any money? Relative to the rest of these people? I just told you. Because it's pay to play, on both sides.
So how can, how can campaign reform happen?
So, Theresa, I don't know that campaign reform is how you're going to get there, because it's, I mean, maybe, I'm open to transparency, full books, I'm open to all that, but I don't know the campaign reform, because it's on both sides. Some, to be honest with you, that's a partisan thing that is designed to, many times, lock certain things out and allow certain things. I'm open to that conversation. I just want to make sure it's not partisan, trying to block out certain, you know, interest groups. The real issue, everybody's got, is spending money so they can get money for the campaign. I don't know the way that you're going to be able to answer that question, other than the American people have got to get educated to it. So I don't know. If you've got some ideas that philosophically I can agree with, I'm happy to look at it. But all the things I've ever heard on campaign finance reform are very slanted, very, you know, intrusive on, on the ability to just only help one side, and it's designed for political purposes. But I'm open to that conversation. But I can tell you that the lobbyist crap, it's on both sides, it's both parties.
Also, for the IRS auditing every politician and making a public.
Okay, you give it to personal finances?
Yes.
Good luck, good luck. I guarantee you, I'm among the lowest assets of anybody in my, anyways.
So I support the immigration reform that I think is, that you're talking about. How does that play into the national fentanyl crisis, which you know that I am very passionate about? And what is Congress doing to stop that from coming across the border?
Explain it to me, because I'm not following you fully either. Say that again.
The fentanyl?
Okay.
Crisis?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I'm sorry, yes, given the due experience.
I'm not saying just close the border and kick everybody out, like, I'm not on that far of the spectrum. But I also think that something has to be done to stop it.
Yeah, the precursor chemicals are coming from China.
What are we doing to stop it?
Well, look, as long as the floodgates are open, you're not going to be able to stop it. As long as the flood, I mean, that's where those of us who are saying, "Joe Biden, I agree with you." You mean, follow me here for a second. Joe Biden, I agree with you, 2006, when you said, "The reason why I support physical barriers at the southern boards," what are you talking about? "Is because of the drugs that are flowing between ports of entry." I just gave you an exact quote, almost verbatim, of what Joe Biden said as United States Senator in 2006. And then he gets in within 20 to 100, 20 days, and says, "Not another foot." He cancels. Congress had already appropriated 200 mile of physical barrier construction. Physical barriers work. Obama built 100-plus miles of it. Again, this ideological shift, it's amazing. It's amazing what's happened in this country. Yes, sir.
I have that one question I asked you two years ago. When are you going to defund the FBI?
We did a, we did a CGS, CJS, John, help me with the acronym, please. CJS. Science and Justice. CJS. Remind me what the acronym stands for if you can.
Are you talking about the committee?
No, the appropriations bill, CGS bill. We'll come back to you on that, but let me just say that part of that is, the Department of Justice funding, that was the biggest cut of what we produced last year, was in that, was in that appropriations bill. We were trying, and Andrew Clyde, who I served with, he's in the Freedom Caucus with me, deserves the credit, he went line by line, trying to make sure we go after those, because of what Madison said, "The power of the purse is your most leveraged as a member of Congress," and we don't use it.
Well, I mean, look at the facts. If you don't have any law, you have no justice, and we have no law right now. That's why I love this crap goes on, because we don't have any law.
The lack of the rule of law. Look, y'all. Look, y'all, it's both sides. When we went from George Washington issuing eight executive orders, and the next presidents after him only issued one apiece, Madison, John Adams, they only issued one executive order, and now we get to Teddy Roosevelt, Republican, who issues 1,000 executive orders? Article 1, Section 1 of the United States Constitution says all legislative powers will be vested in the Congress. This whole idea of a president being able to do all these things, it's madness.
Yeah, I agree.
It's also the reason why they inserted in the Constitutional Convention, we're going to do an article on this, I found this a few weeks ago, where you can go through the Constitutional Convention of 1787, George Mason, one of my favorite founding fathers, made the statement, bribery and treason alone is not enough for impeachment, we also have to add high crimes and misdemeanors, what happens if people willfully don't follow the rules? Talking about constitutional adherence. The reason why they added high crimes and misdemeanors was because they feared a day when people wouldn't follow, all legislative powers would be vested in the Congress. Teddy Roosevelt does 1,000 executive orders. Cousin, distant cousin, Teddy, the Republican, progressive Republican, Roosevelt, the Democrat, issues 3,000 executive orders. On average, now, both Republicans and Democrats, we average 200 executive orders per president, and I can, I mean, I can just tell you what I feel, every week, it's what, what other executive order do we have to file a bill, knowing it's not going to go anywhere in the Senate? This president is unbelievable, I've got these executive orders. They're unconstitutional, and that alone is the grounds for impeachment. One bill, one student loan, where he exceeded, but, but I'm perceived as radical by saying he needs to be impeached by that, when our founders put high crimes and misdemeanors in there for the very purpose. Yes, sir?
It's science, by the way, it's science, or commerce, science, commerce, justice, and science.
Commerce, justice, and commerce, justice, thanks, ma'am.
Defund sanctuary cities, is a local, state.
And then they want the federal government to bail them out, their grants. Yeah, so, look, this is also part of this grand design of census. Here's a, can, like, I got Democrat friends who get this, right? They get this, they understand what's going on. They're like, well, what, what, why are they doing this? It's math, because every 10 years, we have a census, and every 10 years, where are you going to go if you're an illegal in this country? Where there's work, and where there's benefits, where there's housing, right? I'm not going to tell you where I live, but, you're not coming to where I live, right? My little small community.
Yeah, later on, I hear.
I'm not going to name, because by making this statement, somebody might show up to my doorstep, you know, I don't care what I say publicly. But, they're not coming to my little community, right? They're going to the place where they get the most benefits. And, the result of that is, when the census happens, sanctuary cities, they pick up more illegal immigration that count in the census, we lose a Republican area, always, 90% of your rural areas represented by Republicans. Somebody said to me at a town hall one time, you, you realize that none of this madness derives in a rural area? Okay? And, in the rural areas, representing 90% Congress by Republicans, you're going to lose a seat to an urban area. What do we know about urban areas? Even in Oklahoma, it's the hardest areas in terms of the PBI, partisan voter index, where most likely the liberal ideology spectrum is greatest, so in a head-to-head matchup between a no-name Democrat and a no-name Republican, who, who has the advantage? The Democrat. There's a mathematical advantage of bringing them in, so that they can get more opportunity to displace control of Congress long-term. That's the truth. That's why this is happening. It's for power and control.
Well, it gets me, is, they're not supposed to be able to vote, but they're letting them.
People say, oh, they're not voting. We, I have talked to people, I have talked to people who are election experts in different states, who are telling me they're slipping through the cracks because of the lack of photo identification and citizenship requirements, and we know it, we know that we're scrubbing the rules, they're voting. Chip Roy has a bill, which I told you all ago, he's probably, his name's going three times, he's one of the smartest guys I served with, and, by the way, Michael Cloud's going to be at our town hall in, or at our event in Muskogee here, another Freedom Caucus member, she just happens to be bringing this girl to ORU.
That's what I do.
Oh, his boy, his boy, yeah. And I told him on the phone, and like, I knew his boy might start, if we make the connection between your daughter...
I'm not playing matchmaker.
Um...
What do we do?
What do we do what?
What do we do to, can we do anything to help? I mean, help your cause, help you with your cause?
You gotta have people elected who, who don't care about getting reelected, who are willing to go into an audience and be willing to make people mad. That's all, or we're going to our knees.
We've got people running in offices now that need support, that need help, that do that, that are that.
You got about, you get, when I run amendments last year, given, when I just showed you this presentation, it leads you to only one conclusion, there's no way to fix this through revenue, we have to restrain our spending, okay? I mean, let me say this, if you want to try to fix this with revenue, you're going to have an economic collapse. The way, the massiveness of this, you're going to tax people to the point where you're, what I showed you with the corporate tax rate from school to go, and how we've brought in, brought in a trillion more in revenue over a few years because of the corporate tax rate change. If you do this, thinking you're going to get more revenue, what you're going to lead this country to is, there is, I do believe in the Laffer curve, there is a point, where whatever you tax, you get less of, and when you break over that point, whatever you're aiming for, you get less of. And so, look, I don't know how you get reaching the conclusion of this presentation, and we've got to restrain our spending. The only, but, when I'm running bills on the floor, to go back just to 2019 spending levels, since then, we've increased the discretionary budget 30%, it's a small percentage, remember by the chart? And I can't, last two weeks ago on the floor, and I had an arts and humanities bill, an amendment to arts, an amendment to humanities, and I present an amendment to bring, take both those programs back to 2019 spending levels. Just 2019, arts and humanities. I've cited you the 18 number eight powers, it's totally supposed to be left to the states or the individuals. Couldn't get either one of those bills, amendments passed. They won't even take arts and humanities back to 2019. We average about 80 people supporting my amendments, and about 100 to 120 voting always against us, and all, that's Republicans, and then all the Democrats. Everybody wants to dole out more free, free handouts, more free candy, no accountability, no way to pay for it, if we don't start buying vegetables, we're not going to have a country left. So, you've got to elect people that are willing to run on a campaign platform like I did, who said, let's connect the dots, yeah, and Warren, let's connect the dots, inflation, where you're spending $15,000 more this year to afford the same goods and services as compared to January prices of '21. You are going to pay for this, all this spending, one way or another. Either gradual, there's slow suicide, hidden taxes, inflation, you're paying for this, y'all. Yeah, government's simple, however much government you want, it's going to be how much government you're willing to pay for, and whether you realize it or not, you're paying for it one way or another. It's just this system of inflation, and paying for it through a lower standard of living leads to a, a Great Depression at some point, and us losing the world reserve currency. The way I'm talking about is what Democrats and Republicans used to agree on, is you